I would like to call to order the April 8th, 2024 meeting of the Corrine Township Zoning Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our own indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome to, all your attendance, township staff and my fellow commissioners. Just a friendly reminder to those present to please silence your devices at this time. Mr. Becker, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bachman. Mr. Gering.
Here.
Mr. Westfall.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
And Ms. McMullin.
Here.
And seeing that Mr. Bachman is not here, we have Mr. Hauser in his seat.
Here.
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda was the presentation of minutes, but we did not receive those for this month.
Yep, we'll have those at next meeting.
Okay, thank you. So, next, we have an opportunity for a public address. This time is to welcome members of the public to address the zoning commission with any items on tonight's agenda. However, if you are here for tonight's public hearing, your comments would be heard during the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. We do not have a final development plan, so that brings us to item seven on tonight's agenda. We do have a public hearing for zoning case CZC 24-2, which is a zoning map amendment requiring a preliminary development plan for 9328 Pippen Road. And, Mr. Becker, that brings us to you.
Thank you for the introduction, Ms. McMullin. Just to reiterate, it will be case CZC 24-2, that is our second case of the year. This will be a zoning map amendment requiring a preliminary development plan, and this is for the Vivera Northbrook Community of Development. This is taking place at 9328 Pippen Road. Starting us off with our zoning map, here's what it looks like from a thousand-foot view. Zooming in. Keep in mind of the B1 designation up at the top left there. The existing is an R6. It will be our physical map. Property map. And per usual, lastly, our topo map. So as for the proposed action, Charles Baberman is seeking to rezone the property, particularly through a PDM. That would be our mixed-use plan development district. Once again, to reiterate, it is existing as an R6. The whole end goal would be to provide staff-serviced medical assistance on-site as part of a 118-room senior living facility. As for some brief case history, generally, this would mark the beginning of the case history for 9328 Pippen. The applicant met with us on February 2nd, 2024, in office to discuss the standard operating procedures of the zoning commission, maximizing consistency with the Corrine Township zoning resolution, and general plans regarding the phasing of the projects that are on-site, particularly Phase 1 and Phase 2. I'll address that later on. And a couple weeks later, on February 27th, the applicant met here at the trustee chambers to discuss and answer questions, comments, and concerns that were related to the project in itself. And neighboring residents were informed, and residents showed up. Here's that application that Charles had submitted. There's that accompanying checklist. And here's their first addendum. This would include the letter of intent. And just to reiterate, as with every meeting, these are all online as well. Here's some examples that they had provided of other Marion projects. Here's the certification of owner. Here's their Hamilton County Earthwork Application. Their Stormwater Drainage System Application. This would be the Hamilton County Legal Description. Then here are some of the incorporated buffer photos that they had provided for us. You can see that there as well. Moving on to the Civil Engineering Package. Here's those plans that they provided for us. Once again, these are online as well. Also, the applicant will touch in on this, but as you can see, the detention pond on the south, then the building in the middle, then the parking lot to the north. Be their landscaping specifications. And then turning toward addendum C, this would be the architectural package. Their floor plan. Now, turning toward the applicable zoning documents, looking at the Corrine Township Comprehensive Plan first, we are focusing on the housing analysis, that's on page 17. The public health analysis, that's on page 34. And the land use analysis, that's on page 46 and 47. Here's that housing element. Once again, this is all online. The public health element. And lastly, the land use element. Now, turning toward the zoning resolution, particularly looking at 4.3 text and map amendments, Section 4.5 Plan Development District Review, 9.3, that is our Plan Development District Standards, and then 7.4, that is our agricultural and residential use-specific regulations. Starting first with 4.3.4, I'll breeze through this very quickly. The following criteria shall be used in decisions regarding zoning amendments. A, the amendment is in accordance with the Corrine Township Comp Plan, Township Land Use Plan, and other adopted plans and policies of the township. This resolution, as adopted by the Board of Township Trustees. B, where more than one zoning district is available to implement the comprehensive plan or land use designation, the applicant must justify the particular zoning amendment being sought and how that is best suited for the specific site based upon the policies of the Corrine Township Comp Plan. As for 4.5.3, that is our approval criteria for plan developments. The following criteria shall serve as conditions that should be satisfied before the approval of the PDP. One, the PD district and PDP are consistent with the land use plan and comp plan. Two, the proposed uses will have a beneficial effect on the community. Three, the internal streets and primary and secondary roads that are proposed properly interconnect with the surrounding existing road network. Four, the site will be accessible from public roads that are generally adequate to carry the traffic that will be imposed upon them by the proposed development, and the streets and driveways on the site will be adequate to serve the residents or occupants of that proposed development. Five, the minimum common open space areas have been designated and shall be duly transferred to a legally established homeowners association where applicable. Six, the PDP is consistent with the intent and purpose of this resolution, and in particular, the furtherance of the purpose of the PD district in 9.3.1. And seven, the PDP has been transmitted to all other agencies and departments charged with responsibility of review. That'll then turn us to 9.3.1, PD review. The purpose of the PD district is to allow for a flexibility in the zoning requirements where the result will be a higher-quality development, provide for and locate suitable recreational facilities, open space, and other common facilities while preserving the existing landscape to the greatest extent possible, encourage sound planning principles in the arrangement of buildings, the preservation of open space, and the utilization of topography and other site features, and obtain creative and coordinated designs in harmony with surrounding uses and allow procedures supplemental to those applicable in other use districts to establish under which development plans particularly designed to meet the objectives of this section. And lastly, allow for creative development that conforms to the goals and objectives set forth in the Corrine Township Comp Plan. Turning to 9.3.4, this would be the compliance with plans. All plan developments approved after the effective date of this resolution shall comply with the Corrine Township Comp Plan and Land Use Plan, including compliance with the permitted uses, densities, intensities, and other recommendations of the plans. And any variation from the comp plan and land use plan shall require an amendment to the applicable plans through review and approval by the commission and trustees. Turning to 9.3.6, so the design standards. Design standards for area, lot coverage, density, yard requirements, parking, landscaping, and screening for a proposed PD district shall be established in the PD Primary Development Plan by the zoning commission and Board of Trustees. Exceptions and variations from the design standards provided by the base zoning districts of this resolution, whether that be R1, R2, or B1, for example, may and should be granted by the zoning commission and Board of Trustees when it is determined that due to certain design elements, natural features, and public amenities, the exceptions are warranted. And C, standards for public infrastructure improvements shall be governed by the applicable regulations of the agency with jurisdiction that is charged with responsibility for review. And lastly, turning to 7.4.6, this is specifically the institutional housing section from our resolution. The maximum density of institutional housing shall be seven units or seven beds per acre, whichever is less. In a residential district, there shall be a maximum of 21 units or beds per site. All buildings shall be set back 50 feet from all lot lines. All units shall be rented or sold to the elderly, the handicapped, or the disabled in order to qualify as institutional housing. Mixed developments, however, such as a retirement village with some independent living, shall be built under the multifamily dwelling regulations or as part of a PD. And no part of a parking area shall be closer than five feet to the side and rear lot line unless it is adjacent to a residential district, where it shall then be set back 50 feet from the property lines adjacent to such districts. All setback areas shall be landscaped with grass and planting areas, and shall be well-maintained. And to lastly, take us to our staff recommendation. Staff recommends approval of case CZC 24-2, the zoning map amendment requiring a PDP for 9328 Pippen Road, with no conditions. That will conclude our staff report.
Thank you. And commissioners, before we move on to a public hearing, does anyone have any questions All right, so at this time, we do need to open our public hearing. Can we have a motion and a second, please? Mr. Becker, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gering.
Here. Yes.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
And Ms. McMullin.
Yes. All right, so at this time, no one did sign in to speak. I just wanted to check with the audience to see if there was anyone that was choosing to speak. And I know, I know someone from your group would like to speak, so would you like to swear in?
Anybody that plans to testify during the public hearing, if you stand in this right hand. If you have a name, I state your name.
I, David Reeves.
You say all this word.
I will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And whoever wishes to come forward, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Charles Baberman, Dinsmore &amp; Shoal. I'm the applicant in this matter. 255 East 5th Street, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. Justin, you have the presentation. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to consider our application this evening. With me, I have David Reeves, Development Coordinator for Marion Development Group. And David is going to give you some information about who Marion is and what it is that we're planning to do here in Corrine Township.
Thanks, Charles. Thanks, Commissioner.
And again, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Reeves. I work for Marion Development Group. We are located at 1801 Payne Street, Louisville, Kentucky, 4021, no, sorry, 40206.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marion Development Group was started in, was founded in 2001. We are a full-service development shop. We have architecture and construction in-house, which allows us to take on some projects that other developers might pass over, including the one that we're presenting today. Our focus is on people, neighborhoods, and community. In the 23 years that we've been in business, we've successfully completed dozens of multifamily, affordable, and market-rate multifamily, in addition to several assisted-living facilities similar to the one we're presenting today. Thank you. We think this project is going to be beneficial to Corrine Township. We think it fits well with the comp plan as we understand it, and we look forward to presenting it to you. Thanks.
David will be available for any questions you may have as well. So, Justin's presentation was very thorough, so I'm going to skip over some of what we planned to discuss, so as not to be redundant, but we are here proposing to rezone this property to PDM to facilitate this project. Institutional housing is the specific use, however, as Justin articulated, there is no residential district that could permit institutional housing at a scale that we're proposing here. This is a four-story, 118-unit facility. If you want to. So, as David just mentioned, Marion has extensive development experience throughout the region here. This would be the first project in Corrine Township, hopefully not the last if we can get this one going. This is going to be a significant addition to the community here. 118 new senior living units. This is going to be approximately $50 million investment by Marion in Corrine Township. It's going to create 55 new jobs, and that's 55 new salaries, with other people spending money in the community, so the impact of this will reverberate, not just within the community and within the property tax rolls, but throughout the community, with other businesses benefiting from these new jobs. There's the site. We, I do want to reiterate, we're only proposing today to develop Phase 1 of this project. It's a 12-and-a-half-acre site. Phase 1 is going to be approximately seven acres. We have an aerial, I think, if you want to go through a few more. There we go. Phase 1 up here in the northeastern corner, it's a seven-acre portion of this site. Phase 2 down in the southwestern corner will be, whenever that is developed, we'll be back in front of you proposing a use for that site, but for the time being, we are just proposing Phase 1. I do want to remind everyone, this is just conceptual. At this time, we don't have an engineered site plan. Those details will be brought to the township in the final development plan approval process. Today, we are simply here requesting approval for the proposed use that we are contemplating for this site. We are proposing 30-foot setbacks. We're going to maintain the existing vegetative buffer that exists so that the residents to the south and to the east of this site have that visual protection so they can maintain the existing views that they have of that vegetative buffer. We think this is an excellent transitional use between those residential areas and the business uses to the north of this site. And the comprehensive plan agrees with that analysis as it contemplates this being that transitional buffer with this senior living use. Justin hit on some of these things, so I won't reiterate these code sections, but as I mentioned, the future land use of the site in your comp plan is designated, excuse me, designated for multifamily residential and development as that transitional use. And this being a senior living multifamily use would be, we believe, perfect for the site and in line with your comprehensive plan goals. Furthermore, your comprehensive plan specifically articulates a need for new senior housing in the community. And so this is not only compliant, but in furtherance of your comprehensive plan's desire to see additional senior housing options, particularly in a multifamily denser setting, which increases the bed count, as you know. It allows for more units to serve more seniors within your community. This is going to be an affordable community, and so this is, will also protect more vulnerable residents within your community as they age and give them an affordable senior living As David mentioned, this is going to be a very high-quality development. Marion is an experienced developer. They have, they've done similar communities throughout the region. This is not going to be their first crack at the apple. This is going to be a high-quality, $50 million investment that's going to benefit the community, further your housing initiatives, and benefit your residents. And this community is going to have, it's going to be walkable for its residents as well. There's going to be walking paths throughout the community. There's going to be extensive open space. As I mentioned, we're going to preserve the vegetative buffer to create a natural environment here, again, in furtherance of your comprehensive plan. Justin already articulated the approval criteria. Be happy to go through any of those specific criteria in more detail with the commission members if desired. There's the vegetative buffer, so you can see that this is a heavily treed area, and for 30 feet, it's surrounding the building and the parking areas, we are going to preserve that vegetative buffer. Community impacts. New development is great, but we understand that existing residents want to make sure that the new development does not overburden municipal services, and this community fortunately would not. Senior housing amongst all other potential uses of a site is one of the lowest traffic-generating uses. I think that's intuitive. You can appreciate that. These residents do not drive. There will be approximately 55 new jobs, so there will be some traffic created in that respect, but in terms of total trip counts, this is one of the lowest traffic-generating uses that the Institute of Transportation Engineers calculates. There's going to be no impact on schools whatsoever. Obviously, no school-aged children would reside in the senior living community. And EMS, despite this being 118 units of seniors who will have EMS needs, the benefit of a community like this is it allows seniors to be in an environment that's more conducive to their medical needs as they age. And so, this can actually reduce the EMS service calls within the community because you're taking your existing residents, putting them in a facility with support staff to monitor them, to help them in the event of a fall and things of that nature, to evaluate the situation and determine if an EMS call is actually needed in a given situation. And so, the net effect to the community is typically actually fewer EMS calls than would otherwise exist. So, as a whole, this community, the benefit to you as a township, you get the financial impact of a $50 million investment. You're creating 118 new senior living units for your residents to enjoy, to allow them to age in the community, and you do so without burdening your services in any material way. So we believe this is a great project for the community. It's a great investment, it'd benefit to your residents, positive financial impact. It's an appropriate location for the site as that transitional buffer between residential and business uses. We think this is a home run for the township. And so, we're excited to present the project. We appreciate your consideration, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I think you were wanting to speak, did you?
I'm here if you need to answer questions.
Okay. Was there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Nope. All right, so before we come out of our public hearing, I wanted to check in with my fellow commissioners and see if you have any questions for the developer.
I do. I'm just looking at the zoning resolution, 7.4.6 for institutional housing. I just had a couple of questions about that, and this may not be the right time in the approval process to dive into these, so let me know if it's not, but just curious about some of the numbers in there, including the maximum of seven beds per acre, because it seems like we're more than double that figure, if my math is correct, so I'm just kind of curious about that.
Yeah, we're just putting it under the guise of the PD. Just given the context of, from our February 2nd pre-development meeting with the applicant, just all across the board, you know, sort of laying it on the table that if you weren't doing the PD route, that this would be something that you would be able to do at all. But, given the context of the situation, what it's working toward, just for the broader goal of helping senior living, especially the senior assistance in providing those services, in the guise of that, we felt that it was, you know, more than just.
Okay. And I want to just clarify too, that that would apply in a non-PD district, but the PD zoning allows us to have a greater density is the key there.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. I appreciate that.
And then a point of clarification that I need from staff is just the way that it's written on the agenda. So, tonight, we are just looking at the rezoning piece. We are not looking at the development piece. This is not the preliminary development plan. The way it's written is zoning map amendment requiring a preliminary development plan. Am I correct that it's just the rezoning we're looking at, and then they'll come back to us with the PDP? Or are we looking at the development tonight?
To my understa-
I prepared for both.
Yeah, to my understanding, this would be both the rezone and the PDP, and then the next meeting would be the FDP.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that I had it right. So, a question I have for the developer, please. So, I know the intent is two phases, so Phase 1 is before us, you'll bring Phase 2 back. Phase 2 has one of the areas I'm most concerned about, which is the dilapidated buildings that are on that property now. Is your intent to redevelop for Phase 1? And can you remove those buildings? There's a barn that's fallen in, a house that no one lives in, an old fruit stand that literally is falling over.
So, we are proposing to rezone the entire site, PDM. We have, we're proposing to develop just Phase 1 at this time. We are not proposing anything for Phase 2 at this time, so the plan before you would be to leave everything in Phase 2 intact right now. However, we are open to, I think, if there's anything that needs to be done, right?
Yeah, in speaking with the community, they have expressed concern about the area where the house and the fruit stand are, and we, you know, we will be maintaining that land. We will, us developing in the Phase 1 area and maintaining the Phase 2 area, we believe will prevent a lot of the illegal dumping that's been happening on the site currently. We do not currently have a plan for demolition, but we're open to it.
Good, because I'm coming back to you. All right. The setback, I believe you said, in our zoning regulation is 50 feet, proposed is 30 feet. I know difference between residential and plan development. And there aren't many areas where the 30-foot buffer becomes a problem, except I couldn't tell on the map if this building right here is that house that exists, or if it's that tire shop, or the auto body.
It's a crow body.
Is that the auto body? Because if it is, then I'm, then I'm perfectly fine.
I'll look it up real quick, but I'm 90% sure it's.
I think Land Fair's a bit further south. That, that looks like what you're pointing to is on Adams, isn't it?
It's kind of hard to tell.
Yeah, it is.
I believe that's Land Fair. The auto body shop, the square?
I think that's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Here's the church. There's the parking lot of the church there.
I just know there's one resident that lives right there.
I believe that resident is here, under the legend.
Oh, okay. That's what I was thinking too. Okay, so then they would be good. All right. Thank you.
And Ms. McMullin?
Yes.
If I might mention, in regards to your previous question on the structures that aren't planned in Phase 1, there has been a discussion that has been started relative to the potential use of those. And so with some Northbrook residents, there is a, some inquiries being made on maybe some temporary potential uses for those that would be beneficial. And so we're in the process of talking with the developers about that.
For those actual buildings?
Yes. Yeah, particularly the Staverman Home, of just rehabbing that into something specific. So when something more is known about that, we can bring that to you. But they are where, I think there is an interest in ensuring that the upkeep of those properties is maintained in a proper way, and it doesn't continue to look as dilapidated as it has been. It's been abandoned for several years.
Right. The farmer's market is falling over. That needs to come down.
Value in that, but the house is a little different. And even to the left of that, the north side, you've got garage, and there's a larger barn further in the back. It's not quite seen, but nonetheless, I think there is an awareness of the need to maintain those properly, and at the same time, potential for finding some use for them while they're waiting on Phase 2 to come to fruition.
Right. So I totally understand the house, the barn, and the farmer's market area. I drive past there every day, and it's awful.
Yeah.
So I don't see me caving too much on that one. My next question is lighting. It was hard to tell in the plans. What is the proposed foot candle?
Post Kiba 7965, North High Street, Columbus, Ohio. I swore in at the beginning here.
Yes, thank you.
So proposed foot candle is to meet code at all the property lines. As far as the specific, I believe it was three-foot candle at the property line, but I don't see issue for, if code is a more stringent requirement, to meet what that is. But my understanding was it was three. I can confirm on the plan here shortly. But we are intending to meet code with no variance requested there.
Okay. Thank you. So that is all from me. Gentlemen?
No questions.
Mr. Hauser, any questions?
Are you just planning on assisted living, or are you planning on full care also?
That is to be determined largely depending on the rulemaking that's currently in process at the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. We are building it to assisted living standards. We do not yet know if we're, it will not be a skilled nursing facility, but what remains to be determined is whether we offer memory care as well. Does that answer your question, Mr. Hauser?
So at this time, you don't have Medicare beds or stuff like that at this time?
I'm not really sure. At this time, no. No, we're not a skilled nursing facility.
And for skilled, I saw in your letter to us that you were seeking regulatory compliance or regulatory permission for that. How will that change your building? Is it just you have more locks, so the patients can't get out?
A memory care unit would require additional security measures, yes.
And that's something that is already built into the plans before us?
It is.
Okay.
And just to keep in mind, we, these are not final engineered plans. These are conceptual-level plans. So as we determine the financing for this project and whether or not we can do memory care, then we will make changes and be back in front of the township with a final plan, specifically with a number of units, the services to be provided with those units, the security, and all of that information.
Thank you. Another question for staff. We have all of these multiple parcels that are out there. Is the intent of the rezoning to rezone each individual parcel? Or are you going to put a condition that they are all combined into one lot, one parcel?
They are planning to consolidate, and this decision by the zoning commission, a recommendation, and then final by the Board of Trustees, would rezone those, and they would consolidate all those since they are the same.
Okay. All right, that's it for me. Any others, gentlemen? All right. So, thank you. We do need a motion to come out of public hearing, please.
So moved?
I'll second. Mr. Garen, second, and Mr. Becker?
Mr. Garen?
Agree, yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
And Ms. McMullin?
Yes. So gentlemen, last opportunity for any questions. And if anyone would like to make a motion, I think you heard my wish that I do believe that we should tidy up the area closest to our street that we're driving by every day with the removal of the old farmer's market and that dilapidated barn at least. So if we are seeking to make a motion for approval, I would respectfully ask if we can include that condition. Is there anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve CZC-24-2 zoning map amendment, with one condition, to remove or remediate the derelict buildings on site.
I'll second.
Thank you. And Mr. Becker?
Mr. Garen?
Hi.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. McMullin?
Yes. Thank you. So motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. So moving along, so we do not have any informal concept reviews, no old business. And Mr. Becker, I know you have some new business for us tonight.
So a real quick question for you guys, just wanting guidance from a particular past case. For brief history, this is about Northgate Meadows. This is 10101 Arborwood Drive. It became an established PDR in 1970. That was through case ZA4-70. That accompanying resolution was number 407. And there is a daycare at 9959 Arborwood that is included within that whole PD. That opened up 18 years later in 1988. And while both developments came before the adoption of zoning in Corrine Township, there is still a resolution that dictates the conditions of the broader development. And that specific point states in that resolution 407, approximately 2.45 acres at the southeast corner of Springdale Road and Lower Linda Drive as extended may be developed as a business site. Business uses shall be limited to general retail sales services, such as convenience goods, groceries, and related sales, but in no case may the said site be developed as a used car lot or auto dealership or related type of sales, a gasoline service station, repair garage, or drive-in restaurant or nightclub.
There went the solar eclipse bug.
There it is. Doing good so far. But so where we're at now is the owners and the operators of the daycare at 9959 Arborwood specifically, they are requesting a certificate of occupancy from Hamilton County, but the county will not issue anything until they receive the go-ahead from Corrine Township first. So that leads us to the point that we're at now. How should we best address this, given that that resolution from 1970 was set in place? And we gave a few sort of, you know, leading examples of where we could go with this, but wanted to, you know, leave it open to the commissioners as well. Whether it be, for example, a non-conforming use certificate that could be issued, or even further an amendment to the PD. Just some examples, but generally leaving it open to the commissioners for guidance and thoughts, what you think about that.
My first question is why? Why not leave it the way it is? What prompted them to ask for this non-conforming use?
I had to ask the same exact question and did not really get a clear answer. Given that they opened in 1988, and it is the year 2024, that was my first thought, but I wasn't able to get a clear answer. They just kept insisting that they really needed a certificate of occupancy.
So which is the path of least resistance?
As we sort of discussed, yeah, I do believe a non-conforming use certificate would definitely grant justice. Doing an amendment to the PD would just create just another meeting that we would have to go about and, you know, sit around, you know, have to do the review, you know, have to have the vote. Not to say that that's not, you know, a prior, or proper and professional step, but also at the same time, given that it's been almost 40 years, and there hasn't been any, from what I know of, talks of dissent or opposition against having that daycare there, or the fact that it's not a part of the PD, I think that that would definitely be of justice.
Okay. Any comments or suggestions? If not, I'll make a motion.
I'm with you. I think the easiest means to do it.
Right. So I'll make a motion for you to issue a non-conforming use certificate for the daycare at 9959 Arborwood Drive.
I'll second that.
Mr. Garen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And Ms. McMullin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so no administrative reports, no announcements. And we were scheduled for a meeting next week, but we no longer need that meeting. So we will be meeting again on May 21st, 2024. All right. So we wouldn't make it through this meeting without the eclipse bug. I wish we could make a motion for the trustees to upgrade our projector. That's what I wish. Okay. All right, good. All right. Then we will move towards adjournment. So thank you to my fellow commissioners, staff, and everyone in attendance tonight. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.